Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. This is the, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Committee of the Hole at 6:02-ish for Thursday, April 5th, 2018 pursuant to notice and according to the proposed agenda. Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Melendi?
Yeah.
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Giselle? Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Okay. Barely have a quorum, but we have a quorum. So with that, let's have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think that's Dr. Rowe.
Good evening. We've got a trained group. They're already ready to go.
Yeah.
Awesome. So as they're working their way up here, we have a handful of our cheerleaders who are going to guide us in the pledge. We'll do that, then I'll ask them to introduce themselves and give you the opportunity to talk with them a little bit.
A little closer so I can hear them. The eye part, ready? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't we hold you guys on your cell phone at this time? Because we'll have you come up here and we're going to ask you some questions.
I'm Bella Calabrese.
I'm Tyler Eberhart.
I'm Carolina Talaska.
I'm Aisling Kozelka.
And I'm Kendall Pyro.
Why don't you guys come on up here and you're going to take over the meeting for a few minutes. Sit anywhere with the green, press the buttons with the green lights on and you can just talk in your normal voice and do whatever you want. Parents, if you want to come up and take pictures with the little kids, they just plow up there. Okay. Normally, the President, I'm the Vice President, Mike Fleck. Don Drizal is the President and he's really good at this and I'm terrible at this, so that's my disclaimer right at the beginning. So, tell me what grade you guys are in, tell me about what the, all about cheerleading, what you guys accomplished and all that other stuff. So go ahead.
I'm a junior in high school and this year we got fifth at State, which is the best that Huntley Cheer has ever done.
Excellent.
And I enjoy doing cheer at the school because I feel like it gets me more involved and I really feel like I didn't make just friends this year, I made a family and I had really the best year of cheer so far.
Excellent.
I'm in 11th grade and I feel like another big accomplishment was placing first at sectionals and...
That's awesome.
It's nice to be on the team because you get to really meet everybody individually and it's not like you're all like in different groups, you're all kind of like a whole. It's nice.
For me, starting off the year, I feel like we were kind of low and high, first competition, and then as the year went on, we progressed more and more and you could see that at sectionals since we won first. It was like an awesome feeling because my freshman year, we got first and that was the year I was on the team with my sister, so it was just like cool to relive that moment. And then since we got fifth at State, I think it was pretty cool that we got to accomplish that as a junior.
Great.
I'm a junior and I love Huntley Cheer. It's a great program. There's so much camaraderie on the team. I feel like this year, we've had so much positivity and it's really worked out for us, obviously from everything that Dave told us about that happened this year and it's a great team to be a part of.
I'm also a junior and I love being on Huntley Cheer and just being able to accomplish so many new things and just becoming a part of something so much bigger than what you just are and being able to cheer on your school and it's amazing that we got to place fifth at State and just the best we've ever done. It's an amazing feeling to be a part on this team.
Awesome. Awesome. Well said. So, how many people are on the team?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, okay. And when does the season start and when does it end?
Well, we start practicing in like the summer and then competition season starts...
November.
Yeah, like November, so we like cheer football on and then it's like our competition season and that goes on until like February is when State is, if we make it, and yeah.
Awesome. And where was State at?
Bloomington.
Was that a fun trip?
Yeah. Always so much fun.
Now, I know that there's, back in the day, they didn't have all these programs to start out when you were young. How many years have all of you been cheering? Is that the right word, cheering?
Yes.
I was a gymnast for like eight years and then I started cheer in eighth grade and then made the team my freshman year.
I started tumbling in middle school and then like I tried out my freshman year and it's my third year now.
For me, I really had no experience with cheer before because I was a gymnast, like the A's and S's. But I started practicing in eighth grade and then to now.
I've been cheering my whole life. This will be like my 11th year cheering, so yeah.
Okay.
I started tumbling in middle school and then I tried out for the team freshman year and now we're going on our third year.
Good. And so many people have more, another year or more ahead of you, I guess, good things ahead in the future for you guys, huh?
Yes.
How many of you plan on cheering in college?
Maybe. Still undecided.
All right. Well, good. Thank you very much. You guys are actually the next item on the agenda, I think. Is that right? Did I get that right? Okay, so, but what we're going to do is we're going to take a picture with you guys and then we'll move on to the next thing. Okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You guys just stay there and we'll come behind.
Do we get to sit? Feel official?
Yeah, yours is pretty special.
Probably learn something.
Usually ask questions like, do you know what we are, what we do? More interested in what you guys do, so what's your favorite lunch in school?
You guys want to scoot over here? Or something? Jump in the air.
Oh.
Want to move the chairs back? Okay, let's move the chairs. See, you guys are all taller. Yeah, that's how it usually is.
That's so funny. You're so funny.
We want to see you guys, so come on up.
They might mistake me for a cheerleader.
Cheerleader smile.
It's funny, right?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, that was a dress rehearsal for the next item on the agenda. So, we have student recognition by the Board. Mr. Ari.
Yes, this time would Mr. Glenn Wilson, our Athletic Director, come to the podium?
Thank you, Mr. Ari. We appreciate it. We also thank you very much for the invitation this evening to recognize our cheer team. I really have nothing left to say, the students did an awesome job of describing the accomplishments, so let's give it up one more time for them. But I'll say a couple of things such as, thank you very much for the opportunities once again that you help us with and afford to us. Our cheer team certainly takes advantage of those opportunities. It's one of the first teams I met when I came onboard in July and I feel like every time I walk past the fieldhouse or I'm going to get some ice for my ice water, they're practicing. They are always working. They're extremely dedicated. They work very, very, very hard and you can now see or have been seeing the benefits of that hard work with achieving fifth in State this year, the highest that our cheer team has ever accomplished. So, they are an incredible group. It was my pleasure to watch and to see them progress. A quick story, the Belvedere North sectional, I was at wrestling, I believe, and I was looking at the updated scores and I knew top five needed to advance and I see fifth, not us, fourth, not us, third, not us, and I'm starting to get really nervous. And at the same time, my assistant, Mr. Landvik, texts me, "We just won the sectional." And I was just at that point of looking up towards two and one and they kind of merged at the same time, so it was a great experience and I think my response was, "Holy cow!" exclamation point, exclamation point. So, it was great to watch them continue to ascend throughout the season, make it through to day two, which is extremely difficult at State, seeing the teams down there and the high level of competition that exists, and then to earn fifth. So we're extremely proud of them and at this time, I'd like to bring up our coaches, Coach Fowler and Coach Stacy, who can elaborate.
Hi, I'm Coach Fowler.
I'm Coach Stacy.
I want to thank you for having us here tonight and recognizing our program, these girls and guys worked extremely hard. We always joke around and the parents put signs on our state bus that say 200 and some practices since, or 200 and some days since our first practice to start the year. So that's really how long our season is, like we're about to start up in just a couple weeks again. So, we get really excited when we do well and this year was really special for us because we did have 15 seniors on our squad. So, it was amazing that we have so many people sticking with this program for all four years. We're so proud of them. And I know a lot of people already said, the accomplishments we had, we loved cheering our school on. Not only do we love doing that, but we love being part of the competition season. We haven't, I think our first competition was our lowest and I think we got seventh place out of quite a few, but then after that, we just kept moving up. So, it was an exciting year for us. We're excited to make Huntley history this year and this squad just has so much more to prove and this program just gets better every year. You can look down to our rec program and see how they're improving and how much involvement we have at cheer. I think the rec program here was just talking and they said they had 211, 200 people signed up for the youth program and 11 teams coming into high school. So, it's going to be a bright future for Huntley Cheer. Anything else?
No.
Now we call them up. Awesome. So each of the cheerleaders will come up. When they come up, they'll introduce themselves to you. Sounds great, girls and guys. Come on up. Don't rush. Someone should first. Yes. You may now take the floor. Say your name and then...
I'm Kendall Pyro.
Aisling Kozelka.
Jada Rizzo.
Kelsey Ah.
Riley Casada. Gio Girardi. Kendall Lajuski. Francesca Benetti.
Tyler Eberhart.
Bella Calabrese. Carolina Talaska. Abby Noy. Caitlin Concenine. Mandy Simmons. Ellie Raines. Alyssa Kelly.
Great. Here you go. Congratulations. 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 Quite an accomplishment. Congratulations. Obviously it was very hard. Congratulations. This is why they don't let me play with the boys. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. It's okay. Congratulations. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I'm sure you guys can figure out how to...
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations, like last week's day. Congratulations. Congratulations, Joe. Congratulations.
I'll get it. I'll get it. It's so silly to put a request in for a store.
You didn't get to have any change.
Oh, that's right. They're getting done. Good job, girls, because I can't see behind you.
Okay. Yeah. Down, down, camera. Okay.
The cheer parents.
All right. Great job, guys.
What would we do if they weren't on rollers? They'd put names on the back.
Okay. Congratulations again to the varsity cheer team and also thank you to the parents for all the dedication as well. As Mr. Drizal says, you're all welcome to stay for the meeting. So feel free to.
Thank you. Got to let them circulate out there and then move. Yeah, sidebar. Three minutes.
You can like feel the energy in the room with all of them. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment pursuant to our policy. We have four people that have signed up for public comment and we do limit the comments to three minutes. So in no particular order, I will start with Mr. Brett Sandblum, if I got that right.
Oh, got you. Okay. Yes, I'm here to represent JDK Services. We do a bunch of snow plowing in the area. We've been involved in snow plowing since '72 and we'd like to see if we could bid on your snow plowing for the next upcoming season. Currently, we take care of District 300. We've had that contract for two years. Prior to that, we had it for many years and then Tovar got in there for six years and then we got it back just two years ago. We also take care of some big vendors like Jules Food Service, ComEd, AT&amp;T. That's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Next is Randy Spitzer.
Good evening. I'm a snowplow contractor. I don't bid anything in the area here. All my stuff's in O'Hare Field. I'm just here to represent the kids, the teachers, the school district. And I'd like you to see if you could rebid this snowplow contract. There's a couple of things that I saw that the formula that you're using to get this, it doesn't add up. Like, if you look at the contract, like nine inches...
But when you give anyone the power to do per ton, it can be any amount of tons. You don't know how many tons it is. Hey, it's a little more ice, you know, we use double a ton. It doesn't work out. I can guarantee you, you will save more money. I would guarantee you, if you do per application. Very, very seldom does anyone do per ton anymore. And what else was I going to say? That's it. I just hope you just bid it out and I want to see you save some money and put more money in the school district and for the teachers. But I'm not here, I will not bid this, I don't do anything in this area that doesn't benefit me, my family. A matter of fact, I have to hire someone to do my own driveway. So, I don't do anything out here, but please look at that and put some money into kids' pockets, to teachers, extracurricular stuff for the kids. That's what I'd like you to see you to do. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is Chuck Veitch.
Hello, everyone. I represent C.T. Veitch Landscaping. Great to have your own name, isn't it? I've been doing, you know, a lot of stuff around town here for many years. I actually plowed the school board for four years back when it was on Lincoln Street and where the Cosmet Center is now. Had a bus barn there with all the buses parked in it back in the day. You probably remember that if you've been around here a while. I can't keep up with these guys now because again, $55 a ton for salt, I pay more than that. And I buy 12, 15 semis a year on a year like this year. I don't know how you can get a bid from somebody without having a better schematic on how to do it. I know that you're paying more than you're supposed to on that parameter. And if you allowed someone not to bid the entire contract and break it apart in three distinct groups, you would save money, a lot of money. Because a guy like me, I live right there by Marlowe's, I could drive the stuff across the street, you know? I don't have to have a truck and a trailer to haul it over there or run it down the road. So, I'm just saying, it's a better idea to have it split up in three contracts instead of one large contract. A lot of people have proven that doesn't work. You've got too many subcontractors driving their own machines under their own, you know, insurance. You don't know how it works. You've got to get into the schematics of it to figure out how it works. You're just getting a blank contract from this guy. That's it. Thank you.
Now, we have Jim Greve.
Good evening. Jim Greve, I reside at 11403 Reed Road in Huntley. I have also been a professional in the snow and ice control business for over 50 years. Brad, welcome back.
Thank you.
What's it been, 15, 16 years?
About that, yeah. Thirty or 40. We're not that old.
Anyway, most, well, most of you should remember that I was here in the summer of 2015 when you awarded this contract. I vehemently begged you to look at Great Lakes Snow Systems because they definitely, not according to the formula, because the formula that the district uses to determine the lowest responsible bidder is not a true rendition of actual events. As an example, they use in their formula for a nine to 12 inch event, they use that formula figuring one of those events happen every year. One of those events happened historically now in 11 years. The last one happened in 2016. Before that, it hadn't happened for 10 years. So, unfortunately, if you have a contractor, and all of us are aware of that, but if you have a contractor that uses that to his advantage and throws a ridiculous number in there, like $500 for that, he can inflate his prices for his one to three inch snows and his five to six inch snows. The following March, I finally realized there was a way, I've been claiming for years that they were using far more salt and they were invoicing for far more salt than they were applying. I had no way to prove it, my professional opinion. Finally, the light came on. The school district has surveillance system. You can see when those trucks arrive, you can see how much salt is in the trucks, you can see when they leave and how much salt is in the trucks when they left. I started reviewing those tapes. I viewed hundreds of hours with them. I sat in, with Dan, I sat with Adam Dean. Also, at the time, I sat with Adam Dean. They had a lot of other things to talk about. I knew he was safety, what's his title, safety, whatever. But anyway, just in conversation, I brought up Blue Point. And shared with him the little bit that I knew about Blue Point at that time. I think that was shortly after a church group found a bullet or a casing in the high school. I think Adam informed me at that time, they were looking at a hybrid, hybrid thing like 300 had or something like that. That was the last, you know, last I had discussed it with him. When I got, after I started reviewing those videotapes, I received a lawsuit from Tovar personally. It was within a matter of a few days.
Mr. Greve, I just want you to know you're over your time. Just give you a little, few seconds to wrap it up.
I did submit a request under Board Policy 20.23 for consideration and some additional time.
We'll give you another minute.
Anyway, after reviewing all that video footage, I, I had the proof that there is no way they are applying the salt that they were billing for. After, after, on the 21st of April, that same year, I came and made that presentation to the board. The following Monday, I received another suit from Tovar. It was a, yeah, anyway. All an attempt, I believe, was just an attempt to keep me quiet. Fortunately, after a year and a half and $50,000 to defend that, all those charges were dismissed with prejudice. Shortly after I made that presentation to the board in May, in April, community as a whole was presented a document from the administration doing a cost comparison on what they actually paid Tovar compared to what they would have paid the other two contractors that bid it. There was a gross error in the formulation on this contract or on this spreadsheet. The spreadsheet showed that Tovar was $54,000 less than Great Lakes Snow System. It was a $54,000 error. There was actually only $1,700 difference between the two, which I've also emailed all of you a spreadsheet today. You have that as well. $1,700 difference. And the only reason that difference was there was because that was the one time in 11 years that we saw a snowfall over 12 inches or over nine inches even. That was the first time.
You're well over your extra minute now, sir.
I beg you, sir, I did submit a request.
Yeah, and we gave you some extra time already. You've spoken for over five minutes now.
This is a crucial issue.
I understand.
Crucial issue.
But I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to give you about 10 more seconds.
Basically, I respectfully request, I pray that you look at your bid specifications, revise them, talk to other districts in the area, see what they're doing, and put this out for bid. I mean, this year alone, the difference between Tovar and Great Lakes, just this year alone, $86,000 under the same conditions had Great Lakes plowed it versus Tovar. You could have put Blue Point in the high school for that. Last year, $40,000, that Great Lakes would have been less than Tovar. You could have put Blue Point in Marlowe or Heinemann. You guys have a perfect situation here. This man has hands-on experience with Blue Point. I mean, they had, have it in Burlington. I mean, it's fabulous.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jim.
Okay.
We appreciate your comments.
Excuse me, I beg your, beg your pardon. Who's Great Lakes? Great Lakes Snow System was one of the three bidders three years ago. Is that your company or not? Okay. No, that's not my company. That's, that's all I wanted to know. I didn't even bid it three years ago. Okay. Thank you. Because I could not play those games. Understood. Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment, Mr. Archibald?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item number five, revision and adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any revisions? I do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There's no others. We need to add item number 15 to go into a special meeting, which would then move adjournment to number 16. And then, I think that's.
Just go to the special meeting.
Yeah, so, and then we'll, and then go into, in the special meeting and then go back into public session after that. Okay? So, there's a motion and I made the motion, there's a second from Ms. Melendi. Is that a voice vote or is that a roll call?
Voice.
Voice. Okay. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good. And on to Mr. Garren, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
6.1. Thank you very much. 6.1, the 2019-2020 school calendar, Mr. Rory.
All right, thank you.
I love talking about 2020.
What you have in front of you is a compromise calendar between the HEA and the Huntley administration. This process begins in the fall and we put together a calendar, share it with the HEA. They give us some ideas and some of their thoughts. We come back, we make some changes, we share it with our administration. We've gone back and forth now for quite a few months and have come up with the following compromise calendar. Just to point out a couple of, I'm not going to go through this month by month, but just to point out a couple of things. First of all, the first day of school in 2019 will begin three Wednesdays before Labor Day. That's one thing you'll want to notice on there. That does even out the semesters for us and allows for the quarter classes at the middle schools to have an equal amount of time. As we move through the calendar, parent teacher conference, Thanksgiving is the same. We have two weeks for Christmas, which is the same that we got for spring break, which is the same. The only other difference that you will notice is that there's one last day of the short February break that we have. And what we did was cut off one day of the February break so the kids could be out of school the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them. If not, this is the administrative recommendation and the administrative HEA compromise.
Terry, is the spring break over Easter still?
I'll have to take a look.
Do you know?
I'll have to take a look. No. It looks like Easter is going to be on the 12th of April. So, for 1920, no.
Any other questions, comments? No? Yes, maybe? Ms. Melendi?
Close.
Are you sure?
Just do.
All right. Then I will recommend that we seek approval at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's good with that? And then we'll move to 6.2, the 2018-19 IESA membership renewal, Mr. Rory.
Yeah, this is the annual IESA membership renewal, basically stating that the Board of Education agrees to abide by the IESA bylaws for the 18-19 school year. We need a board approval on this and then the board president will need to sign off on it after next, after our board meeting in two weeks.
Any questions on this one? Nope. All right. And I recommend we move that to the board meeting in two weeks. 6.3, the 2018-19 IHSA annual renewal, Mr. Rory again.
Yep. Exact, exact same situation. We are asking the board to abide by the IHSA rules for 2018-19. And if they so agree, the board president will sign after the, our board meeting in two weeks.
Any questions on this one? Nope. All right, moving right along. We'll move that to the next board meeting. 6.4, the Huntley High School Global Studies Academy and Fine Arts Academy, Dr. Schlichter.
Thank you. And as I introduce it, I'm going to ask Mrs. Novak and Mr. Truex to come on forward. If you recall, last spring, we had a presentation with just an update and concept of something that had appeared in our strategic plan for last year. And that was exploration and planning for two new academies at the high school, Global Studies Academy and a Fine Arts Academy. So, we are thrilled that the planning has proceeded throughout this year and we are going to be ready to launch it next year. You may recall that when we approved some of the new high school classes, we actually had a few classes in there that were previews of this so that we could get rolling next year right off the bat. So, we have a presentation, Mr. Truex, Social Studies Department Chair, is going to be presenting the Global Studies Academy. And Mrs. Novak, who is our Fine Arts and World Languages Department Chair, is going to be presenting on the Fine Arts Academy. And this is for updates and then any questions that the board might have.
Well, good evening, everyone. So, Global Academy, we now have a beautiful logo. Last time we saw you, we did not. But I wanted to provide a brief update to you in terms of some of the things that we chose not to go with that we communicated last time and then some of the ways in which we're going to go moving forward. And so, similar to last time, so that you know, our purpose and our mission here is to really respond to what's going on globally and give students an opportunity to think about what it means to be a member of our global world. And by that, we're going to be looking at global diversity, global responsiveness, and then trying our darndest to encourage students to be empathetic. Because that's something that we need more to, being a social studies person, we love that stuff. So, anyway, the goal then here is to really give students experiences that allow them to think about the situations, cultures, beliefs of other places throughout the world. So, we want to connect them to our travel experiences in our programs. And we're trying to more broadly connect to what's going on in the state of Illinois. They are working on a global scholar certificate, or I shouldn't say they're working on it, they've passed it. And so, our program will then allow students to also fulfill that state requirement. In terms of what this looks like then, this is meant to also have careers in mind. And so, I'm going to show that to you in a few minutes here with our courses and show you how they kind of connect. But we're trying to give students an opportunity to think about their future and how they might see themselves participating in this global world. It is something that is recognized by the state, it was passed into law. And so, we've already received some emails with students who have whatever the opportunity if we were running it this year to receive some scholarship opportunities and things like that. So, the state is trying to bring some dollars around to this one. So, in terms of course structure, so that you know, it's got a couple of different levels. The first level being our foundational courses. And so, students throughout the program, once they enter the academy and they apply, although they can do this, some of these courses prior to applying and getting accepted, they'll do a broad research piece, we call it global citizenship. They'll be exposed to what's going on throughout the world in a very, very broad way. And I say broad, meaning we're going to look at all the sustainable development.
to really respond to what's going on globally and give students an opportunity to think about what it means to be a member of our global world. And by that, we're going to be looking at global diversity, global responsiveness, and then trying our darndest to encourage students to be empathetic. Because that's something that we need more to... Being a social studies person, we love that stuff. So, anyway, the goal then here is to really give students experiences that allow them to think about the situations, cultures, beliefs of other places throughout the world. So, we want to connect them to our travel experiences in our programs. And we're trying to more broadly connect to what's going on in the state of Illinois. They are working on a global scholar certificate, or I shouldn't say they're working on it, they've passed it. And so, our program will then allow students to also fulfill that state requirement. In terms of what this looks like then, this is meant to also have careers in mind. And so, I'm going to show that to you in a few minutes here with our courses and show you how they kind of connect. But we're trying to give students an opportunity to think about their future and how they might see themselves participating in this global world. It is something that is recognized by the state. It was passed in a law, and so, we've already received some emails with students who would have the opportunity, if we were running it this year, to receive some scholarship opportunities and things like that. So, the state is trying to bring some dollars around to this one. So, in terms of course structure, so that you know, it's got a couple of different levels. The first level being our foundational courses. And so, students throughout the program, once they enter the academy and they apply, although they can do this, some of these courses prior to applying and getting accepted, they'll do a broad research piece, we call it global citizenship. They'll be exposed to what's going on throughout the world in a very, very broad way. And I say broad, meaning we're going to look at all the sustainable development goals from the UN. And they highlight, unfortunately, a multitude of problems that we're trying to fix in the world. And so, we kind of do a cursory issue, exploration of all those. Then in the seminar, they will fine-tune and focus on about four. So, for example, they might do a six-week unit focusing on water pollution throughout the world and water rights and things like that, or human rights. And then finally, in their capstone, students specifically select their own topic that fits within their disciplinary focus. So, on top of that, they're doing research, or not research, I'm sorry, they're taking coursework in foreign language. They have to do a minimum of three years, and they can do more than that. But we want to encourage them to be part of that as well. And then finally, they select a specialization which would focus students into a particular area throughout the rest of the courses that are offered at HHS. I don't know if you want me to pause there to take questions before I move forward? Okay, I'll just keep going. That works for me. I'm just used to like pause and the chat. All right. So, you have this, I think, in front of you as well, so you can look at it more depth. I apologize for the text, but I want it to be on one page. So, there are four specializations. These are the four different areas students can choose from. And so, they might say, I'm really interested for my career, or just my personal interest in high school, for being involved in international relations of human rights. They might focus on government and law, or journalism and media, and then finally, world cultures, which is just a broader piece of just exposing them to what's going on throughout the world. Right now, we've connected with the courses that are currently available, and then we're trying to build out courses in the future as well that would fit within these. There are two additional ones that we're trying to explore, but we're waiting to see what will happen. One is international business, and another one has to do with agriculture and ecology. So, right now, those are the courses that kind of fall in there, and if you want to look at those in more detail, they should be in front of you if you want to take a look. All right. In terms of this, the other emphasis in the course, or I'm sorry, in the global scholar certificate, it's something that we're building in and want to continue to grow, is this idea of global collaboration. Being a global academy, we built in our point system, we followed most of the other academy models. And so, there's a points accumulation component, and so, students can do travel abroad, they can do some online classes, and then we're working with the courses we have and courses we're building to connect globally. So, we've done, for example, last year, we began to Skype into the classroom, bringing in a director of a documentary. And so, we're trying to do some things like that and connect with other schools throughout. We also have a travel program, and we bring the Philippine youth group in each year. They're coming actually pretty soon. So, we're trying to build some broader global collaboration. And then, because this is a statewide thing, there is a group out of Naperville who are helping lead this, and they're trying to do some state, and then national, and then finally, global connections as well for our school to connect to. And with that, then, in their capstone, students will have an opportunity to do what we call field experience. We originally were trying to, we called it job shadowing, but that was too specific because there's not much of a... It's harder to find a job shadow for exploring human rights violations. That would be bad. So, we wanted to instead look at what organizations exist to put students in a position to look at how we highlight those issues, what we do to try to combat them globally, and how we also draw attention to them. So, looking at NGOs potentially, maybe even in Chicago and so on. So, we wanted to give them what we called field experience and connect with those. So, that's kind of our broader, long-term thing that we're trying to begin to build those connections with. And we, of course, want to look at local government here so students can see that, community organizations, newspaper, media, et cetera. All right. And I think finally, the other part is service learning. And service learning is students... It's part of the social science component, I think I had that last time in our curriculum review, but this idea that you highlight an issue you see, explore how to solve it, and then actually go about trying to do so. Right now, this idea of inquiry and so on. And so, with service learning, we already have programs in place. Some of the things that we do here are absolutely amazing, and we want to be able to potentially build upon those, especially on a global scale, if whenever possible. And so, part of a student's capstone would be to say, I specialize in international... Specialize in human rights and things like that. I want to look at what our school can do here locally, what we can do statewide and so on. And I think, I think that time, now I can pause and take questions. So, what can I answer for you?
Brian, you talked about two additional, international business and agricultural business?
It would be agriculture and ecology. But we're not sure, because one, we'd have to put in some additional courses that are currently there. And there's some discussion about other programs or other academies, you know, maybe in the works in a different capacity, so we wouldn't want to step into those.
Okay. I'm just thinking about our offerings at Northern and how the international business and the agriculture would really fit into that.
Yeah, there's some awesome opportunities. So, if it doesn't take off elsewhere, we would love to build it in here, and if it doesn't, then, yeah.
Great.
And I think, Dr. Hawk, that's a great point, just to emphasize, and a little bit of a preview for the board as well. In our upcoming CTE review, we've already started looking at some of our pathways, and we're absolutely factoring in MCC offerings as well as NIU offerings for some of those, just so that we can not only be looking at dual and articulated credit, but just expanding those opportunities. So, I'm glad you brought that up.
And if you see anything in those four that we had listed earlier, we should talk about any...
And there are. That's awesome.
I have a question. And you might have touched on it already, but I'm imagining there's huge interest from the students, but how are you gauging that level of interest? Are you getting... Are you putting out surveys? Are you talking to just groups of kids or...
So, what we did for now is we presented to eighth graders this year, and so, they're the ones who are entering the program, because we can't really operate two others yet. There was a great deal of interest in terms of just parent contact and student interest. We had... We offered two courses to start this off, global citizenship and global seminar, and those kind of acted as our original, like, real-world polling data, because if you put yourself in that seat, then we know that you want to be in there. We hit, for the first time going through, about enough for thirty-four, thirty-three students that enrolled, but even more in the global seminar as well, just not enough to run that yet. So, we're going to do it in this following year. I think part of it is, we do have other academies, and we also have the global competency piece and some other pieces, and nobody's sure how to fit all of that in at the same time. But there was a great deal of student interest. In fact, there was students and parents contacting. I was just asking, how might I enter this in my sophomore year, because I don't know how yet to address it in my freshman year?
I do like that you kind of benchmarked off of the other academies and how they're structured so that there's some continuity in the procedural side of it, I guess.
And I would speak to that, too, and I apologize for not saying it earlier. That was one of our major adjustments. When we spoke to you last time, we were proposing something that was wonderful in our eyes, but it also spoke to some of the challenges that we would have structurally. And so, we decided to model it over the other academies as well to make sure that it was easier to communicate to students and parents, and also just the system would already support it. Other questions they can ask?
So, I'm curious about the service learning. How do you go about picking which organizations to participate in, or is it just... A student may have a passion for, say, habitat for humanity. Is it a matter of one-offs participation-wise, or do you somehow try and funnel it into different choices so that multiple kids can participate as a group collectively in different organizations? If that makes sense.
So, it does. And so, I'll answer it in two ways. So, the first is, we have a service and action class right now, and it's not individual students. They kind of collectively make choices so that they can participate as a group.
Okay.
And so, that's one course that would fall in those. But we also, with that capstone, to be quite honest, that one's not developed yet. Our vision is to try to make it so that a few students can kind of go, unless there's one student who really wants to deviate, in which case, we don't want to fail to support them. So, the idea is, we're going to have some structures in place, some contacts, and then support those who want to kind of go on there.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. I think we'll move on to Mrs. Novak with our Fine Arts Academy. And just a quick note to the board, in your packet, you actually have slightly longer presentations than what we're seeing up here, slightly more detailed. We can also get you a copy of this one. We condensed it down just a little bit for the actual meeting.
So, thank you so much for having us here today. So, my name is Leah. I'm the Fine Arts Department Chair at the high school, and I'm very excited to share with you all the work that we accomplished this year, getting the Fine Arts Academy a little bit more organized and ready to get rolling. Last year, I know that a lot of effort was put into throwing a lot of different ideas out, that we wanted to open this academy, but it took a lot of time for us to just sit down as a group and figure out what that actually would look like. Because we have, as artists, we have these beautiful, grandiose visions of fame, and it's going to be perfect, and then it's, okay, well, now we're in a real school, and what does this really look like? So, what I wanted to share with you this evening is how we've put together, actually, how a student progresses through our academy, and what is available to them, and how they'll go through it. So, the mission and the vision of our academy is, in a summary of all the language up on the board, is just to give our kids a very well-rounded experience in the arts. We have an amazing performing arts program and visual arts program at the high school already, and we want to take advantage of what our students are already able to produce and give them an opportunity to dive deeper into the history and the theory and the social connection to art, because that's something that we don't always focus on. Sometimes, we get so buried in getting ready for the concert and getting ready for the art show and putting on the play that we miss the opportunity to talk about all of the history and the social connection. So, what we want to do is that we want to attract those students that are fascinated in that deeper layer, and how do we dive more into the academics of art? So, our mission is to provide an opportunity for our students to really immerse themselves in that, in that project. Students that are interested in the Fine Arts Academy, there are four easy steps to the Fine Arts Academy. The first is that our students complete an application. As the other academies, our students are applying for our academy during their sophomore year. And what that means for us is that students are presenting a portfolio of work through, actually, a Google site that will be helping them create, where they're showing different things depending on what their craft is. We ask our music students to actually upload recordings of things they've worked on. Our visual arts students are supposed to upload photos of work. Same thing with our theater students. Show us a technical drawing that you've done. Show us a monologue from your class. And then, we also ask our students to write a personal statement as part of their application. And the reason we ask them to start this personal statement is because eventually, as they apply to colleges, they will have to write a personal statement about the arts. So, we want them to already go in understanding how to communicate why the arts are important to them. Why are you passionate about this? How is this going to mold you as an adult? After students are welcomed into our academy, they follow a multiple tracks of coursework depending on what their focus is. All of our students are encouraged to simply get started in one of our basic classes. Join choir, take a two-D art class, join a theater class. We always ask our students to start simple. And what happens is that as our students progress through the academy, they are asked to take more courses and more difficult courses as they go through. Our academy follows a point system, as all of the other academies do, and students earn more points as the courses get harder, and the expectation of them completing just increases as they go. We also ask our students to participate in performance opportunities. The phrase that we use is that in the class is where they learn the craft, and after school, in the performance opportunities, is where they actually get to put things on. We have our students... I apologize, I use the word performance. We also mean performance and production. So, also, our art students are there, they're making things, they're putting on shows, they're going out and doing those things. Our students are asked to participate in eighteen extracurricular points. Similar to our curricular points, the more complicated the task, the more points that students receive. So, as they go through, they will earn more points as what they're accomplishing gets more difficult. So, as an art student, very often, some of the parents have reached out to me, some students have reached out to me, and kind of said, how do I do this? I see the points, I see the list, I see all these different things. What does this actually look like if I'm a student? So, I actually made some examples of what a participation sequence could look like for a music student. There are probably a hundred different variations of how this could be accomplished, but I just wanted to show you kind of a simple, basic track of what it would look like. So, a music student, this happens to be a band student, their curricular courses, as you can see, a student starts in concert band. By sophomore year, they've moved up into a higher band, that's why they receive more points for it. By junior year, they've moved up into another, a more rigorous ensemble, and then we're hoping that they also take a secondary course in the fine arts. Now, we are looking to not only encourage our students to participate in multiple fine arts courses, but as you, I'm hoping you can see somewhere in your packet, we also accept... Sorry, that's the wrong word. We also encourage our students to receive Fine Arts Academy points by taking courses outside of the Fine Arts Department that still support the fine arts. So, one of the examples says here is that we'll be proposing, actually working with the Social Studies Department, to propose a humanities course. So, students would actually be able to receive social studies credit in a course taught by a social studies teacher, but focusing on humanities, which is so much more focused on the history of arts and how it progressed through society. By senior year, our student has continued to perform in a top band and is taking a music theory course to understand, like we said, the history and the theory behind their craft. Our senior students are also asked to participate in what's called open studio, and that's actually preparation for their capstone, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Their extracurricular activities, I also wanted to show how they progress as students stay in our program. A freshman might just sign up for pep band, that's a quick, easy thing we can do during basketball season. But then, as you can see, as they get older, what they're doing is increasing. They've joined marching band, they've moved into a leadership position. So, it's that students are just moving forward through our program and earning more and more points as they go. A theater scholar would have a very similar experience. I don't need to read the whole thing to you, but you get the gist of the idea. As the students' theatrical courses get harder, they're earning more points. We also encourage especially our theater students to get involved in our music program and our dance program, because that will serve them in the future if they choose to continue into theater. So, students can receive points by taking a secondary course, taking one of our dance PE courses, things like that. We also, as you can see, down senior year, one of the other classes that we would love to propose is a playwriting and script analysis course through our English department. So, again, an opportunity for our students to take a core course taught by an English teacher, but focusing on the arts. On the... All the way on the right, you can see the extracurricular activities that we encourage our students, not only that their participation in the activities gets more involved, they've become... Not only they've moved on from an ensemble role to having a featured ensemble, they're now in a supporting role, now they have a leading role, things like that. We want our kids to be progressing and moving forward in their participation. A visual arts scholar, very similar. Our courses get more advanced. We want our kids to take a lot of different things. Our art students have a little bit different of an extracurricular opportunity, just because it's a different art form. What our extracurricular activities for our art students are about curating shows or about being an assistant teacher in a fine arts course, taking open... Going to an art studio and doing a one-day seminar, things like that, because our art students aren't necessarily putting on art shows every single day. So, it's a little bit different. We do, however, really encourage our art students to get involved in the arts in an artistic capacity. We have our art students get involved in construction crew for our theater, or finishing crew, or they design a poster with our graphic design courses for something in the building. So, there's a lot of different things that our students can do. So, earlier, I had mentioned how, senior year, our students are enrolled in what's called an open studio period. What this is, is actually based off of what's very common in high schools for their AP art studio. Very often, in schools, our AP art class is actually double-booked as a double period. The first period, they're working with their teacher, and the second period is called open studio. So, it's just come in the art room and work, because that's what we need. We need time to just work on our craft. What we've decided to do is actually open that for all of our Fine Arts Academy students. So, our AP art scholars would be doing that same thing, working on their AP portfolio, because to submit an AP portfolio, students have to prepare twenty-four pieces of work. Five of them actually get sent to the AP college board, and the other nineteen are photographed and submitted. So, that is a lot of work to accomplish. So, it's nice to have that second period to simply just work. Our music scholars would have the open studio, and what they would be doing is they would be preparing for a recital, just as you would see in a college. They're working on individual pieces of music, quartets, duets, whatever it is that they're working on that they want to present, but this is their time to be self-directed and prepare for them. Our theater scholars is what I actually think is the most fantastic collaboration. What we're looking to do is that our theater scholars, as they progress through their classes, are starting to hone in on what part of theater they're the most passionate about. Are you an actor? Are you a director? Are you a technical designer? Are you a... What part of this is for you? Are you a, what part of this is for you? So our theater scholars will all have open studio at the same time. And the idea is that they will produce a completely self-directed play. They choose the script, they have to design the set, they set the roles, they block the scene, they do all of it as one collective whole. And then the idea is that then, once that show is completed, we throw everything up in the air and we start again. So we have our theater students really working in an experimental way of, can you do this on your own? Because that's our goal. We want our students to be able to leave our program having the, not only the capacity but the confidence to walk into a space, to walk into a college program or a work setting, that they are masters of their craft in every sort of way. So that is our goal for our Fine Arts Academy. I know I talked a lot, I'm sorry. But if you have any questions, yes, same thing, please, I'm ready. Would you like to know?
Question. I've been chomping at the bit to ask.
I'm sorry, I'm ready.
No, this is where it's coming from. I was a choir person in high school.
Oh, sure.
And so when I see the choral part of this, I don't see much. And I say, "Okay, I don't want to see choral people have to take a band program or a visual arts produced stuff that they don't need for the sake of making points."
Yes.
And I come from a background where there were magical singers, there was a show choir. I don't know where that is today, because, you know, that was the last millennium for me. However, in that context, if you have people who are vocal, have vocal talents and want to develop those going into college, I don't see yet, hopefully, that's the operative word.
I'm ready.
Where that goes for them, because they also have, whether it's a state competition, opportunities to hone their craft, that part seems missing to me. And I'm hoping that there's a place for them to go to.
Yes, absolutely. So a choral music student would not only obviously stay in their main choir, students could get additional points for being in a secondary choir if they chose. The music theory courses are of course available, but one of our proposed courses is keyboarding, a very common skill, not like a computer, like playing the piano, I'm sorry, we call it keyboarding. But one of the skills that I know that colleges are usually frustrated with is when vocal majors come in and can't play the piano. And I don't mean that they have to be able to play Beethoven sonatas, but if I hand you a piece of music, can you learn your part on your own? So that's one of the places that we definitely want to see our choral music students going. We also want to make sure that they have opportunities, just as you said, for solo ensemble, for choral work, for magical groups. Ms. Bieber, who's the new choir director at the high school, is absolutely on board making sure that we have a lot of opportunities for our kids. But so, no, we want to make sure we've got all those good things going.
Okay.
One of the things I just want to mention in this, actually, is for the context of all of our academies, is you'll see that new courses emerge as we roll through. And just this last round of new courses, we actually did retitle and resequence our choral offerings, sort of in preparation to get this set up. And then my anticipation is that we'll see those offerings emerge. One of the things that we look at when we look at some of these different new courses, and again, I'm going to preview a little bit, the upcoming CTE review, is you could have a new course, that's maybe one for the global studies, that if we propose it and we offer it, and it might not run every semester, it hasn't been a huge capital outlay to put it in place, maybe it'll run the next semester, but then sometimes you have courses that you've completely revamped a facility to be able to do. So we're a little more cautious about those. So my anticipation is going to be that for many of the choral courses in particular, there's not really going to be much to stop us from offering a fairly wide variety for students as the academy progresses, because those are not, you know, we're not going to be buying gigantic instruments for that. That's something that would be a fairly low risk to have a large selection for students to choose from.
Right. And it depends on who is guiding the program, I get that. Because from my experience, it was gentlemen are in a tuxedo and women have a specific gown, or it was robes for a concert choir. It depended on, I've seen magical programs where the kids are fully decked out in magical outfits, Renaissance outfits.
Absolutely.
And it's fantastic. The problem with that is it becomes a burden to the parents, because the program doesn't have the money to facilitate those outfits.
Correct.
And obviously, just like marching band, you have kids that come in in different sizes, so you've got to have outfits for the super tall, the super short, and everybody in the middle.
Absolutely.
So I get that.
That's definitely part of the planning for any new course, as we cost that out.
You can tell this is one of my passions because of my background.
Absolutely.
So I just want to make sure that those kids are getting addressed as well or have an outlet for exposure to, and just by the nature of a vocal program, don't get short-changed in that context. I look at the arts and I say, "Okay, they can do sculpting, they can do painting, they can do," and there's a long list. And the band kids, same thing, they have, in my eyes, it seems like more opportunities just by nature of the craft. And I want to make sure that the vocal kids have those opportunities, as many as they can, in whatever ways that they can.
Absolutely.
That's all my comment.
No, of course, and I want to make sure that our students are getting a well-rounded opportunity.
Yeah.
As you know, there's much more to a vocal major than being in a musical.
Right.
So making sure that there's lots and lots of places for our students to experience those things.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Sure.
My experience with a lot of fine arts students is that they are skilled in various areas. Does this kind of force them to kind of pick a lane and not be able to reach out and say, "You're a music scholar, but you really want to do some visual arts with some theater." Is it going to be harder to try and get all of that in if you have to get what you need for the academy and music?
I want to make sure I answer your question correctly. We absolutely encourage our students to get involved in as many aspects of the arts as possible, but you are correct, there are only so many periods in the day. But as our students progress and as you saw, our students take more and more courses as they go, that is completely up to them. So if my freshman and sophomore year, I've decided I want to be a visual arts student, great. My junior year, I might take another year of art, but I also want to take a beginning theater class, absolutely. We love the fact that we have students that may be participating curricularly in one pathway, but maybe extracurricularly are doing something completely different. So we want to make sure that our students are getting a variety of opportunities. The part, though, that we do encourage our students is to create a focus, not to limit them from their exposure, but to create a focus, because being adequate at a lot of different things is not going to prepare you to walk into a college program. We want to have a kid who's an amazing singer and also happens to be an amazing artist, not someone who is kind of good at lots of stuff, because we want to see that it's going into a future somewhere. Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you both for your presentations, they're very good.
Thank you.
I had to take a step back and remember we're in high school. Sounded like we were in college there for a while, so. That was very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, and I got lost. Where are we? We are on?
Still me.
Yeah, still you, 6.5?
Still me.
Okay, back to you, sir.
6.5 elementary literacy materials report, Dr. Schlichter.
Yes, so this is our next step in our elementary literacy implementation that we presented to you about last year, a little bit right about this time in the spring. And we had predicted the three-year rollout, so we were going to focus on word study this year, which we have successfully done. We adopted materials last year to go ahead and focus on word study this year, collecting our data, and we have some strategic plan targets related to that, because that's an area of focus. Our second year of the implementation, which will be next year, moving towards a balanced literacy focus, will be reading workshop. And then our third year, which is the following year, will be writers workshop. So for next year, our planning is well underway. We've had professional development begun for staff already. And our next step is that we needed to really review what materials are needed to support reading workshop. And so we will not, and I guess I just want to make this sort of distinction for the board, we will not, in any balanced literacy program, have an all-encompassing basal system such as reading street. So balanced literacy is taking a well-rounded approach, where students and teachers are not marching through a basal from beginning to end, but it encompasses those three areas that we focused on for those three years. So for our readers workshop implementation for this coming year, we are recommending a material that we are bringing to the board for adoption, and the reason we're doing that, even though it would be considered technically supplemental, is because it is fairly large. It's a large resource, it's a very robust resource, which essentially includes units that are structured with the reading materials that go along with it, so that teachers can conduct small group instruction without having to gather those resources themselves. So the pathway that we chose and the material that's in front of you, which is material from a company called Schoolwide, was chosen after a lot of deliberation. We looked at many, many different materials. Like I said, we didn't consider basal systems such as reading street, because those are really contrary to the balanced literacy approach, which at this time really is best practice in the industry. But we did look at several different approaches. One approach would be simply to just fill up our bookrooms and say to teachers, "Build it. Build it yourself in your classroom." We felt that didn't provide quite enough structure for this transition, so that's why we're looking at recommending the adoption of the resources from Schoolwide, which essentially are bins or units structured of books that students would be using at the different levels. So there's units for every grade level, that's why your list is so long, because they actually have different ISBN numbers for the different units at each grade level. You'll see, it kind of follows a pattern there. And that would be for adoption for next year in our transition. Something that we really, really like about the contract that we're looking at is there is extremely robust professional development, but it's not professional development that is training on a system. So just to make that contrast clear, when you purchase an online basal like reading street, the training is really how to use the resource. You click here, you click here, here's the function of this screen, here's the function of that screen. This professional development is really how to teach well in a readers workshop structure. So it's an instructional approach, professional learning, using those materials that we've provided. So it's really a very, very robust instructional professional development system, and that is something that we really like about this. This is a company that offers extremely high-quality professional learning for teachers, so that we can have a good, strong implementation. So what we have in front of you, you've already adopted the balanced literacy concept when we had the report on the review last year, the idea of the three-year rollout with word study, readers workshop, and writers workshop. So for tonight, it's really just the materials adoption of the Schoolwide materials as a foundational set of resources that we can use for our readers workshop structure for next year. So that's what's in front of you. It would be for approval at the May board meeting, because we need to have that on display for 30 days, so we have that little bit of a delay. But that's what's before you, and so we're ready to take any questions, and we have a few people here who might answer those questions, depending on how technical they are.
Technical or other?
Any questions are welcome.
No?
If I can make a comment, I've watched this process from a distance, very thorough process, I'm very impressed by what you're doing in the area of literacy in the district. Again, you're definitely a step ahead, so.
Thank you.
Nice job.
I have to acknowledge Dr. Claude, as well as our elementary principals and Mrs. Lombard, because this has really been a team effort, with those folks truly taking the lead.
All right, then if we have no other questions, we will move that to the May meeting for approval. And move on to 6.6, the 6th through 12 college and career readiness with Naviance, Dr. Schlichter.
All right, and this is one that I'm actually very excited about. If the board members who were on the board about three years ago recall, we actually had a demonstration of Naviance. It was very exciting, because we all had logins and we went in and we searched for colleges.
Yeah, I applied to like three schools that night.
Right, you were applying to colleges. You took your career inventory and found out you were supposed to be like an astronaut or, you know, something like that. And so what we're excited about is we believe this is actually a very visionary approach that's going to really loop our 6th through 12 students into that planning. So we took a measured approach to the implementation of the Naviance system. If you recall, we mentioned at that time, the high school did actually a very limited adoption of that system, probably the most basic level you could, because that system is gigantic. And it's the kind of thing that you could pay a lot of money right away and you would use, you know, maybe 1/20 of it. So we feel like we've really sort of maximized the use of that basic system, and that's really what you all experienced that evening. So we're ready to do two things. On the one hand, we are ready to take the high school to the next level in the next piece of implementation, which you see in your packet, which has some additional personality inventories, that deeper career survey, as well as, and this is really important, is the ability to apply for scholarships through the system, so that we don't have to do that all separately and lose track of what we're doing. It's a very unified system. The second thing that's exciting, I think, about this proposal is it's going to loop us in 6th through 12. So we're going to loop the middle schools into this college and career planning. I need to give you just a little bit of background, it's in your packet, but I really want to emphasize it, because it's a little bit different. So the middle schools have been using a college and career planning tool called Career Cruising. Career Cruising's been around for a very long time. It's a pretty solid tool, some districts use it at the high school level as well. It does not offer the application, the scholarships, nearly the tools that Naviance does, but it is a decent tool. So what's happening is that Career Cruising is revamping, it's changing. So essentially, right now, we are using old licenses, they're like of the legacy program, which is now going away. So if we want to continue having any tool at the middle school, we either have to purchase a pretty expensive upgraded version of Career Cruising or loop it into Naviance, which makes all the sense in the world to us, because then we have that unified approach starting in sixth grade. So a group of our administrators, so middle school, high school administrators, as well as counselors, have been working together on this, and I think they have a very exciting plan for how we're going to be implementing that. Again, some of the details are in your packet. The expenditure is reflected and absorbed into the budget for the next, for the five-year plan. It's going to be essentially a year-over-year purchase service, about $25,000 total for the middle and the high school for that service. And again, that's just a purchase service that we plan for, to make sure that we keep our students 21st century-ready with that college and career, those really robust tools and planning. So there is a contract associated with it, and so you'll see that in there. That's something that we would need to approve, both on the purchase side as well as signing the contract, and so we wanted to bring that to the board, give a chance for any questions if you would like any further updates on that, and then hopefully be approving and signing that contract at our next board meeting. So any questions? I am.
I'd just like to say I'm really happy that we're going to the middle school with more emphasis, because my concern about all of our academies is kids really need to kind of have an idea of what they want to go into when they get to high school, unlike my eighth grader, who's just deciding what kind of pizza he's going to have tonight, you know? There's got to be like more focus, so I think, it's through nobody's fault at all, just his mom.
You know, that's actually a great point. I think that, so sometimes the question that we do get, and I'll just kind of seed this question, is so we're not saying that, you know, someone says, "Well, do you mean they have to take like a career inventory and they're like locked in when they're 12?" Absolutely not, but it gives them a more organized way to start exploring. It also, and I think this is very important, because we are starting to have more curricular offerings at the middle school, and we're going to be looking at the middle school exploratory review coming up that can offer even more, kids are really starting to have to make some choices, even if the choice is, "Do I take a foreign language?", that could have some implications later down the road. And we've had some feedback from our families just saying, "We're not totally prepared to make those choices. I'm telling the counselors at the middle school, we want this class or that class, but I don't know what it means for my child," you know, by the time that they're a senior. And so I think that that exploration is going to be valuable, as well as making kids aware, because, you know, I mean, we can all think back to what we wanted to be when we were 11, but, you know, there's a lot you have to do before you get to be a lawyer. And so it's really good if we start, if we say we want to be a lawyer, we need to start doing lots of things, right, Mr. Flue?
He just gave me nightmares.
Maybe we could talk about astronauts, right? So that, I think, as well is going to be a very strong feature. It'll help our kids to be more self-reflective, and will also, I think, impact that social, emotional piece. Last thing that we're excited about with Naviance implementation is you've heard us talk about for personalized learning, learner profiles, and looking at how can our students develop their own learner profiles and understand themselves better as learners, and these inventories will be a part of that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was very impressed with the comment at the, I think it was bottom of page two of the packet, that it seems like we're getting more use per student out of the program. How does this compare, if you even know, to like the average of all users of Naviance? In other words, are our students using it as often as they should? Should they try and get more out of it, that sort of thing?
I don't have any stats about how we compare to average users, but I could probably ask the company that question and see if they'd share. I can tell you anecdotally that, because I've been a part of another district that's done an implementation, and I'm part of groups of chief academic officers as well, and we do discuss this system. I think that we are, I would say, slightly ahead in terms of speed of implementation. Typically with this program, because it's so robust, what happens is, you know, a district will implement it, they'll purchase it, they'll have an implementation plan, and then you kind of like grab in the tail of the tiger and then you start figuring out what you're going to do with it. I would say it's gone faster for us than it has for many, and I think we do have some we do have some really good structures at the high school that we're using through counseling, through some of our courses, and that's the plan for the middle school, too. But that is an interesting question, so I am going to check with the company on that.
Eric, I've got a question.
Yeah.
Are the professional development that will be needed to implement this, falls into the project consulting hours? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the 20 hours would be for the first year, and then we would budget for additional training as additional people may need to be trained?
Or do that internally. So really, I think the main focus for that PD is going to be for the first year, mostly for the counselors, then they can become our internal experts. I would like to say, too, that Mr. Kupfer went back to the company. He drove a very, very hard bargain on the PD. They highly value their PD, and that was reflected in the first few contracts that they sent us. And so we believe that this is actually a pretty fair compromise. It'll get the job done. And we have worked with Mrs. French, our guidance department chair at the high school, as well as our middle school counselors, to just make sure we have that on-the-ground feedback as to what's going to be needed.
Okay, good, thanks. It's probably a little bit ahead of where we are with this, but on the middle school level, who's going to need the training there? Is it the individual teachers, or how will that look?
First, it will be the counselors. And so we'll follow a similar implementation trajectory we did at the high school when we first started, which is really pushing it out through counselors. Eventually, there is a potential that individual teachers might be, the thing is that the actual training on the system has less to do with functionally how to use the system and more with what can the system do and how can we plan for kids using it. That's really still going to be probably with the counselors. The individual teachers might just need logins if we end up down the road having individual teachers use some of those inventories maybe for some of their instruction. But initially, it will be the counselors for the first few years.
Okay, because I could see where a program like this would be valuable for the kids. Maybe they start with an assessment, and then they have to do a research project on three careers that fit their assessment. I can't see that that's actually going to happen through a counseling department.
Well, they push into classes.
Okay.
So, right, yeah. So when I say the counselors, it's not always just, "I'm visiting my counselor and doing it."
Yes.
Yeah, it's the counselors visiting the classes. So I'm glad you made that distinction.
Yeah.
One more thing I think is in support of this that I think we're real excited about. And, you know, we've had in our strategic plan that we would meet regularly with community groups, and we do have a group from the chamber that we meet regularly with each year. And we keep hearing the feedback, which doesn't surprise us because it's fairly standard across the business community, that, you know, the things that the students need are these soft skills or these learner behaviors or the things that make us reflect on ourselves, not so much the academic skills, but the work skills or the career skills. And so we think that it's going to be really interesting to help students take these surveys. We had some of our teachers take the inventories as a little tester, and their feedback was, "If I put this in front of one of my students right now, they might have a hard time answering those questions." And my response was, "I think some adults would have trouble answering those questions" because we're asking them to reflect critically on themselves as learners and as workers and professionals. And so I think it's going to be exciting about five years from now, when our kids have been doing this since sixth grade, and they get into high school being, you know, ready to reflect on that.
And as somebody who has a high school senior at home, we got to experience this tool up close and personal, obviously since it's been rolled out pretty recently, but this is a phenomenal tool, just absolutely phenomenal. I ran through it myself. I remember when we did the logins and it said, "Yes, you should be a Neil Diamond impersonator."
Right, right.
Sarcastically. But seriously, the tool itself is outstanding, and I'm glad to see that it's being rolled into the middle school so they get some exposure in this upfront. It'll be a tremendous asset for them, I think, in the long run.
Yeah, that's great. Mr. Sultas and Mr. Lichfield have been huge advocates for that, so I think we're excited. We're finally able to bring this to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Melendez, do you think you have a question?
I have a question. Eric, about the, I'm looking at the contract. Is there an advantage or a reason you have on here for a five-year contract? I mean, I'm looking at the discount. There's really not, in the grand scheme of it, a lot, so is there an advantage?
It's a slight discount, and it's, and what it is also is we are starting the contract soon, as soon as the board approves it, for the remainder of the year so that we can get our counselors in in real time. And they are comping us the remainder of this fiscal year if we do the five-year. If not, I would be bringing you a different contract that actually had some cost associated with, say, May through June of this year. So that was the cost savings. There's also slight PD cost savings, not enough to probably make a huge difference, though.
All right, no other questions, then I would recommend we move that to the next board meeting. And move on to six dot seven, the Huntley High School new course material report. Dr. Schlitzer?
Okay, and it's our last one. And so, you know, we did approve some new courses for the high school for next year. And so this is just our typical cycle of bringing forward any additional materials that are needed for those courses. These are pretty standard. You do note that there are a couple of courses there, and we've had this happen a couple times in the medical academy especially, that we've approved a new course and started teaching it, but there were no appropriate materials. And so we've promised that we'll go, you know, if something comes forward later, we would consider it. So there are a couple courses where that's the case, but these are pretty standard, and so we'd like to present them to the board for approval at the board meeting in May. Again, they would be on display for 30 days so that we can get those purchased over the summer for implementation next year.
Any questions on the new course materials? No? Thank you. All right, then I will recommend we move that to the board meeting in May. And we will move to press, or, excuse me, policy, which would be, Ms. Melendez?
Policy, committee press update. We have January, February 2018.
Yes, we only have three policies for you here this evening. The first policy, 2260, is something that is required for us to approve by the state. It was actually required that we approve this by January 15th. The press didn't get it out until January, February. So there is no penalty for being late on approving this. So that one's a pretty simple one. The next one is actually one of the few that have come to us over the years that is not due to legislation. It's mainly due to subscriber feedback from press. And the idea is to make a conscientious effort to improve the content in our policy reference manual. And this one just addresses the obligations of school district casual related to bond-related issues in a more in-depth way. So we're asking that you approve that one. And 520, the workplace harassment, has just been reorganized into a couple different, I'm sorry, three different subsections, but basically the same policy. So we're asking the policy committee to approve all three and to take it forward to the board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, I recommend we move that to the board, approval at the next meeting.
Okay, that then takes care of policy committee. And on to number eight, finance committee. Mr. Quaglio.
Okay. Finance committee, eight dot one. We have our payables, our purchase orders, and press checks, accounts payable, disbursements. Mr. Fleck, it's you and me today. Any questions or concerns?
I have no questions or concerns.
On either of any of those, okay. Very good. We'll move those forward to the board for approval. Eight dot two is revenue expenditure report. Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. You have the February financial executive summary in front of you. The district continues to track within budget. There are a few line items whereby we are tracking unfavorably that the board is aware of, the most significant being impact fees. We are still hoping to hit about $200,000 to $250,000 at the end of the year for impact fees. The good news is, as the board is aware, we are on May 17th amending our budget. And so within that budget, we will be reducing that line item so that we are tracking a little more favorably, or at least tracking with budget when we do that. As a reminder, talking about the amended budget, that budget will go on display April 15th, so needs to be on display 30 days before the budget hearing, which will be in May. We will present that version of the budget to the board at the April 19th Board of Education meeting for review. As a reminder, the budget is being amended primarily for that fourth-quarter categorical payment, the FY17 payment, received in FY18 that was not recognized as part of the FY17 audit, as well as truing up the evidence-based model, the state revenues that have been coming into the district. That kind of leads me to the good news, which you've probably received the email today. The state finally finalized the calculation for the evidence-based model whereby the district is sitting at 66.8% of adequacy, tier-two funding. We budgeted within the current year budget, FY18 budget, an additional $600,000, and that number came in at $775,426. So that will also be adjusted within the amended budget that you will see on April 19th. So, good news there. We're receiving approximately $175,000 more than what was budgeted, so that will be adjusted in that final amended budget. Other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have on the financial executive summary.
Any questions from anybody? You don't have any bad news? It's all good news?
It's all good news.
All right, good. Good news is good.
You know, I do have a question, sorry.
Sure.
The last couple of months, we've been talking about insurance claims. How are we doing on insurance claims now?
Insurance claims with respect to health insurance?
Yes.
We could talk about health insurance. So February, we came in at $631,000. The previous month, we were at $834,000. We had a lot of large claims come into the pipeline in January. I will tell you, although you don't have it in front of you, we are closing March as we speak. In fact, we're really close to closing March. And we had another very, we had another high claim month, probably, I think, the highest claim month we've ever had in the month of March, so that will be reported. That is primarily due to a few additional large claims coming into the pipeline, a few of which will unfortunately track for a little while. So we will continue to monitor those. The good news is we are still tracking favorably.
Two bucks.
With the overall health insurance budget. And I think even based on a few blips coming down the pipeline these last few months, we will still end the year favorable within that health insurance line item, which is always a good thing.
Good to hear. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, okay. Good question. All right, we will move on to eight, three, our fiscal reports, monthly fiscal update.
Nothing really to report that I haven't already discussed. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And you're, you know, one of the things I've always been very impressed about what you've done in your office is the cross-training. So I see this has been out there. So, I mean, the average person in your department, which you don't have a lot of people, I mean, how many different jobs do each of them?
A few. I think over the years, we've cross-trained, each person's cross-trained on at least one other person's job, but now we're trying to get it to two or three.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Yeah, we haven't done this in a few years, and we felt it was time to
It's not like you got a ton of people.
To rejuvenate that. Correct.
There's anything else there? Do you want anything further on that?
I was kind of tracking on that tax objection thing. Is there anything we do?
Yeah, unfortunately, right now, our attorney is working with, you know, it's the same, it's the same attorney, it's the same individual who filed the tax objection with our 2015 levy. It went away then.
Yeah.
At a very nominal settlement, very nominal, a few thousand dollars. And we feel that it's, we feel the same thing is going to happen. In fact, we have more evidence now to support the fact that our fund balance sitting in transportation is being utilized to purchase a large amount of buses, which we have done over the last few years, which we just did a few months ago with the 14-bus bid that we just recently did. So we both feel, the attorney and myself, feel that this will go away.
All right, we'll move on to, well, still we have, any questions on the activity report? No, okay. Eight dot four, our revenue contract. So who is raising money? We have three different organizations doing three different types of things. Any, you have any questions or concerns? Mr. Fleck on that, anybody else? Okay, we'll move that forward to the board for approval, and we're on to HR.
Excuse me, committee of one. So all these items won't have a committee approval, so they'll end up going to the non-consent portion of the agenda, but you still want to go through your items on the agenda, then?
Yeah.
Just so that the whole board's informed?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so nine dot one, HR updates.
So just a quick update from human resources. Business as usual, we've taken our focus towards the 18, 19 school year at this point, as we are staffing, hiring, filling positions, and making sure we are good to go for August. One update here just happened this evening. We still continue to host Northern Illinois for a professional development school here at Huntley, and we have 17 student teachers who will be joining us next year for a year-long experience. Dr. Hawke got to meet some of them this evening, and our principals who are hosting in those buildings got to interview some of those students as we look to make placements here over the next month with cooperating teachers. So a program we're very proud of, and it's been very strong for many, many years, continuing to grow and be strong, and give some students from NIU a very unique experience here in our district. So other than that, business as usual in HR as we continue to hire individuals into positions that we have open.
Okay, questions from the board, anybody? All right, thank you for the report. Nine dot two, tier-two staffing.
Tier-two staffing. As you recall, back in January, the board gave us the go-ahead with tier-one staffing with multiple positions. If you recall, we were taking many of those positions as cost-neutral, as we were having people move within the district, hired in the positions from the elementary to the middle school, from the middle school to the high school, and also filling some new positions. We would like to move on to tier-two. Tier-two has been adjusted a little bit. The original tier-two that was brought to you back in January had three full-time positions at the high school. It is not necessary at this time to bring that forward. This is not an item the board would be taking action on, just simple approval to move forward with the hiring process, to post these positions and to recruit these positions, and to get them filled at this point. And then you would take action on the hires as they would actually come in. So the high school right now, they are looking at two full-time CTE positions, and because of increased enrollment and increased interest in the engineering program, increased interest in Project Lead the Way also. And also at the high school, we currently have a part-time Spanish position. Our part-time Spanish teacher moved into a full-time Spanish position that came open, so we have this part-time position, but we have sections that are leaning us towards making that position full-time. So that is what the Point Two FTE is for. We would post a full-time high school Spanish position. So simply looking for permission to move forward, post those positions as soon as possible, and get out on the recruiting trail.
Questions? Okay, so that's just a report. That's not an actionable, correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that report. Nine dot three, part-time memorandum. This one is actionable, but like I said, it'll just move to the general board part of the agenda. There's no committee action on it tonight.
Absolutely. So this part-time teacher salary adjustment, we were just looking to get some language, and been working with HEA to agree on some language for part-time employees who may not work, you know, the full year, or individuals who may be hired in the middle of the year. So the agreement is attached here, and we've gone through that enclosed session that's been presented as part of negotiations and also an agreement with the HEA. So we're looking to move that forward to get approval and eventually add this to the contract when that time comes, but at this time, it'd be a memo of understanding.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much for that information. And we'll keep moving on to item 10, buildings and grounds. O and M updates, Mr. Rinkosik. Your dime, your dance floor, as they say.
O and M updates, there's a few points to highlight. On the natural gas purchase position in the district, Mr. Troy and I worked on a layering another year of our same position of 50% of our predicted consumption being locked in at a very low price of 29.9 cents a kilo therm, and our fixed basis is zero. It's the same fine position we acquired for the year prior to that, a number of years ago, so we felt good about that. We have our solar RFP out on the street right now. Been a lot of phone calls and interest from vendors, visits from people, and a lot of work going on in the background trying to get more information. The Illinois Power Agency has approved their, has got their position approved on their, how it will work with the process on their part. We look forward to some nice proposals being received Monday. We look forward to some nice proposals being received Monday, and we welcome participation on the committee. Anybody wants to participate on that? And we also have our custodial service RFP out on the street. We had a lot of participation at the pre-bid meeting for that. I look forward to that, being a very highly participated process. Welcome any volunteers for that committee. Cheswick Martin asphalt project, we talked some time ago about the re-engineering of the traffic flow over there. We have visited with the village of Huntley, the village of Lake and the Hills. We had to visit with Huntley because we were actually going to adjust the crosswalk at Reed Road entrance a little bit, and we'll have to rearrange the sidewalk on the Covington Lakes frontage there, which is actually Huntley. So we talked to them as well. Both villages received our plan very well, so there should be no problem. We're not changing any stormwater management of any significant nature there, so there's really no, not much additional work to be done there. We plan to be out to bid on Monday. We've had some intensive design review of late, and we'll get out to bid, and we expect to bring the board bids at the May Cow meeting for that project. Attached to the O and M update, the last page, the system peak predictor review. It's a program that I asked, asked the board for approval to enter into about a year ago. It's been very successful. The predicted savings we're going to see on our energy bills related to using that are about three times, close to three times the amount of the cost of the program, so it was very good. Be happy to answer any questions.
I was looking at the first item on there, the rooftop HVAC units at Conley. How's that project proceeding?
We had the last training meeting this morning.
Okay.
We're in the, all the closeout documents are in hand, except all the fiscal-type documents, like waivers of lien and things. We're very close to closing that out.
Okay.
The system's been operating just fine over the winter.
Good. Thank you. Any questions from the board or committee? Lot of head shaking, okay. Thank you for the report. Ten dot two, asphalt seal coat, traffic paint bid.
The recommendation is here from the board. I received a letter from the low bidder asking to be, have his bid rescinded. Don't have a problem with that. At this time, our recommendation is the chaffs there, we checked references on this contractor we haven't worked with before, and they have very good references. Welcome any questions.
Is your microphone on? I can barely hear you.
I'm sorry. Yes, it is. Want me to try that again?
Yes, please.
I apologize.
I have a question. I mean, usually, these bids are kind of close. If I'm reading this right, this is significantly lower. Is there any explanation?
Yeah, there is. If you look at, on the base bid, look at the square footage to be seal-coated on the Hastings. He missed it. He really did. And he was, he attended the pre-bid meeting as well. It was a mandatory meeting. And I interviewed him promptly after the meeting and talked about it, and within 24 hours, I had his letter. He missed seal coating of the parking lot at the administration transportation and the, what we call the minor drive portion of academic drive, that's the little piece between the three-way stop here in this building.
Okay, any objection to moving this forward, then?
No.
All right, we'll move that one ahead. Ten dot three, snow removal services.
Our contract does allow for us to consider a extension of the contract after the base period of three years, and it's a recommendation at that time to consider extending that contract with Tovar Snow Professionals at no increase in cost. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Yep. So, you know, you had four gentlemen come up and speak in public comments today. So, I mean, how would you address some of their comments or concerns?
Be happy to. First of all and foremost, if you look over, I've been working for the district for 16 years. I have a 15-year history of our snow event operations. How many one-to-threes, three-to-sixes, six-to-nine, nine-to-twelves, greater-than-twelves? We've had two of those. And how many tons of ice melt we've applied each year? And if you look at it over the 15-year average, to work with Tovar, the cost is very close. If you take into consideration one of the events over the 12, over 12 inches, we've had that twice. According to my records, the invoices were received, snow totals we've got, there have been two of those events, 12 and 1/2 inches in the last 15 years. If you look, if you take that out of the picture and you look at just the one-to-three, three-to-six, six-to-nine, nine-to-12, and ice melt only, application only, to work with Tovar costs us, if you take those quantities and average them and take them, and you, and you calculate the bids from the three bidders that we had back in 2015, working with Tovar costs us a little over $20,000 extra. I do know, my experience is here working with the district, we've had several different snow removal contractors. If we had a larger venture, there's no one else I'd want to work with than Tovar, because I'm pretty sure we'll get it moved, we'll get it cleared. We usually, if we close, it's because of weather or other road conditions. We haven't closed around here because of our, the condition of our properties. And, I mean, it's up to the board's pleasure what you want to do with that. I thought I'd share that information.
Yeah, but, I mean, from your perspective, and again, I mean, I've traveled these roads in our district for a long time. I mean, I've never seen much of a problem, but operationally, as far as working with them and them performing their job, I mean, have you ever had any, any significant issues that didn't get addressed, or, or did you, first of all, did you ever have significant issues? And if you did, how did they get addressed?
There have been nothing really significant. There've been a couple little things. Somebody dialed the salt sprayer a little too heavy-duty a couple years ago. We had a large group meeting in a parking lot, hours after school started one morning, and it got, it got addressed. We did, as our camera systems have become more sophisticated, we've got Low-Lux high-definition cameras. I've been talking to them about would they, would they be willing to participate in having the trucks go underneath some of the cameras as they pull on the property and leave the property for ice melt measurement of what's in the truck? They've cooperated with that fully. They've been extremely cooperative, no contest at all. I, you know, it, it takes them a little bit more time, probably. I don't know that it's that significant, but they've been very cooperative.
I mean, again, my experience, here's what I know. When we didn't have them doing snow plowing, we had major issues, significant issues that created a lot of chaos and havoc.
And damage to the property.
And damage to the property, right. Since they've been doing snow plowing, I, I can't recall any significant issues. You know, these gentlemen bring up these various issues and, and, you know, again, I, I always have certain concerns, but first and foremost, even if we were paying them a little bit more money, I don't have a problem paying people a little bit more money if they're doing the job right and get the job done, because it's an extremely important item that gets done whenever there's an event. It's extremely important for the safety of our kids and our people who work here, so.
I realize I'm out of order, but $86,000 this year alone, that sounds a little bit of like $128,000 over the last two years, but that's not a little bit of money.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Jim, thank you for your comment.
You're right, Jim, you are out of order, so thank you.
Yeah, no, it's okay. You can, you can certainly talk to us after the meeting. We don't have a problem with that. No, it's okay, but it, we're, we listen, trust me, we listen to what you're saying, but, you know.
I'd like, could I address a couple more of the points that they brought up?
Absolutely.
One is the matter of the ice melt. I said in a meeting that the EPA has funded people going around, there's a serious problem in, around the world, actually. And Europe is actually, as usual, on the forefront of this, too much ice melt being applied. And so when I look at an ice melt, a call for an ice melt application, I evaluate that very, very heavily and try to evaluate what tonnage we should apply, or kind of generally how much we need, or do we really need it? There are things you do like pavement temperatures and things. There are times where we don't need 30, a good average application, I included many contractors, I think one's in the audience today many years ago, to determine what's, what's a reasonable average amount of tons per, per, you know, we got 3.3 million square feet of asphalt. And at that point in time, when I think we had 3 million, it was 36 tons was a reasonable one-time shot, which would take care of darn near a one-inch snow event. Now, of course, it's 40, because we've got more asphalt. And the thing is, we don't always need that. And, and I don't think it's reasonable for us to want to always just, you can't do anything but call for 36 ton to be applied when you don't need it. We have situations where we have what they call refreeze, where the piles of snow that are there now melt, and they create puddles and they freeze overnight, and we could have slippery spots. We don't need 36 tons, we don't need ice melt on every square foot of asphalt in those situations. We just need someone to come out and spot treat our property. So I, I have a hard time putting my arms around that and also knowing that in our, as doing our due diligence to be good stewards of the environment, we need to carefully consider how much we apply, not just pull the trigger and always just put so much down. So I have a concern with that. On the matter of their own insurance, every, our contract requires that every subcontractor working for a contractor, once they're approved to be working with us, must provide a certificate of insurance to us that matches the certificate of insurance that the primary contractors regard to have. That's at the demand of our insurance company, and we do have that in our possession.
One, one of the other points that was raised in the public comment was breaking up the contract into pieces for each campus. And one, one of my concerns in doing that, and I've held steadfast to this through my years on the board, is I worry that there's three different levels, multiple levels of inconsistency then, because you have three different vendors who have three different standards of snow removal and tailoring it to each particular campus. And so I have a concern then in making sure that that same standard of removal is consistent between the campuses. So for me personally, I have no problem with one contractor taking care of it, because I trust them, whoever that contractor would be, to have that same standard for each campus.
I really appreciate you bringing that up, because another thought did cross my mind about that, too, Paul, and that is that I would hate to have to call Dr. Hawke at 4:30 in the morning and saying there's one campus that can't open.
Correct.
I don't know how we would do that, logistically.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't work logistically. I mean, it's, you hamstring yourself trying to operate with multiple people and trying to do these campuses. I mean, it's, it's too much to do in that respect. So I, yeah, I don't, I would concur with what you're saying, Mr. Troy.
Yeah. Mr. Fleck.
This is more of a comment, but I want to say that of all my shorter time than all of you, except for Ms. Melendi on the board, there's no issue that's been put under a microscope more than this one. And there's been a lot of public comment, there's been a lot of FOIA requests, there's been a lot of information that's been given to us to look at. And I just want to say to the people that are concerned about it that we are looking at it, we are taking it very seriously. And because we're, you know, limiting public comment, and even though it's been extended, we're, you know, we at some point have to limit it, do not think that we are not taking this seriously and that we're, that we're, that we're just rubber-stamping anything. This thing has been the one issue in building your grounds that, that I think has gotten the most, the most attention from all of us.
Thank you. Anything else to add? Anything else, any questions, any further questions?
No, not for me.
Okay. Any objection to moving this forward, then?
Because of the contentiousness of the issue, I would request that we don't move it to the consent agenda, but.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
We put it out there for the vote.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Then that's what we'll do. It will not go to consent, then. It'll go to the general board for a vote. Ten dot four, alarm monitoring contract, please.
Five years is up with our old contract, and it's time to consider renewals. Technology has improved once again. The last contract, we moved our fire alarm to wireless communication, but we left our burglar alarm as a hardline, old-fashioned phone line. And we did that because technology would not allow the digital dial-out communicator data, which can be valuable on our intrusion control system, to be clearly communicated and discriminated by the monitoring service dispatching the local authorities and our personnel. Now, that has changed, the market has changed. And the technology has changed, and we can get a digital dial-out communicator, a radio signal out that will talk and tell us that information. In evaluating what opportunities are with the provider, we had, there was an increase in price, of course, because they would have to provide the radio control devices with the burglar alarm system. We negotiated on that a while. I also checked price with another vendor and found that the systems they had to offer were comparable of price, and the features are comparable. So I have no problem with recommending that we consider a five-year, a new five-year agreement with our present provider, which would include that upgrade to radio signal. Net, we're going to save enough money to wash away most of the increase. We'll save that money on our, the fact that we won't be able to terminate those copper lines, those phone lines, nine phone lines in each building. I've conferred with Mr. Bezinski about, oh, that's savings, and it's predicted at about $21,000 a year.
I know on those copper phone lines, the old-fashioned POTS lines, their, their uptime is like nine, six nines or something like that, reliability. Do we still have that same reliability level with, by using the system without that copper phone line?
I, I, oh, I'm sorry, Paul, you know a lot about this, I know.
Yeah, I do. I was in the telecom industry for a long time.
I do know that the radio control systems are U L certified for what value that is.
Okay, yeah. Just making sure we have comparable reliability on that, that kind of a signal. Thank you.
I switched my building to that, and it's, I've been told that it was as reliable.
Any other questions or beyond that? Any objections with moving this forward, then?
I just need to abstain because there's a young fleck that spends a little summer there, so I can't, I can't be a part of that.
Got it. I have no objection, Mr. Fleck. Okay. So the two of us have moved this forward for approval at the next board meeting. With that, I'll turn over Mr. Fleck for legislative committee.
Okay. For me, and thanks, Ms. Melendi and Mr. Altmeier, you actually kind of did my job today on the evidence-based funding. There is a great spreadsheet that Isby has put out, chock-full of information. I've been trying to figure it out before I got here and during here, but if you get a chance, take a look at that link, is, it is just full of details. And Mark, if you can make heads or tails of it, please do. But it's, it's all good for us, right? So, okay. Do you have anything, Leslie, that you'd like to add to that? Okay. So, all right, well, then, I have nothing else. Oh, I guess it's back to me, isn't it?
I'm on 12.
Yeah. Uh, yes, and that's normally Mr. Greszal, we're on number 12, Board of Education Minutes. Does anybody have questions, comments, concerns, edits for any of the minutes? If not, we, we'll move that forward. It's not my job to do that, is it? I'm not on that committee, really. Can I move that forward? Okay, I'm moving forward. And then same with 12.2, any closed executive session minutes, any questions, comments, concerns, or edits? Okay? Move that forward as well. All right.
Just for clarification, thank you, Mrs. Stock for catching up on this. There's, there was. was an issue with her health, and so she was out of the office for a great deal of time, so I apologize to the board for not getting to these out sooner, but I'm glad to have Mrs. Stock back in, back on schedule, so.
Other spend your spring break, right?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, with that, I will, under 13, make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Okay, so, a motion and a second from Mr. Quagliano, and this is a roll call.
Mr. Gentry, Mr. Garin. Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano. Mrs. Melendi. Mr. Dresel. Mr. Fleck.
Yes. And that motion passes, we are in closed session as of 8:03.
Yes. That was OPP?